It all started on May 28th, which I think was a Tuesday night, that there was a joint meeting between E-911 and Emergency Management. And it really had to do with the communication system. And the price tag that we talked about that morning, or that evening, was nine million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, and some change. And it all had to do, really, with Molarola. And I think I can go back maybe a year and a half, or whatever it was, we had a meeting about this system. And Tim was a consultant before the joint meeting of E-911 and Emergency Management. And at that time, we were talking about a system that cost maybe like nine million dollars. But I think we were going to get the state discount, so to speak, and it was going to be something like five million dollars. And so then I fast forward to this meeting, and where we talked about the nine million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand. And one of the things that there was no competition for this, it was strictly a Molarola situation. There was a vote taken, it was seven to two in favor, and the city of Indianola and the city of Norwalk voted against it. And what they were voting for is to send the nine million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, or change, to the supervisors for financing. So that's the way I took all this. I, when I was, I was uncomfortable, you know, nine million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money to me. And so afterwards, I had met Pat Murphy, who was with Murphy Tower, over in Hartford, I don't know, five or six months earlier. He and I served on kind of a economic development meeting with Doug. And so when I left that evening, I saw Pat, and I said, can I get a business card? And can I call you tomorrow about all this? So I did call him tomorrow. He was on his way to Chicago, and he suggested that we get his brother Clyde, Clyde, yeah, involved in this. So we had a conference call while Pat was driving to Chicago with Megan, myself, and Clyde. And then we set up a meeting with Clyde in Hartford, I think it was Friday, what would that be, the 31st, I think it was, whatever that date was. And we talked about this, and then you're going to hear from Sean Hemstead, who Clyde kind of recommended. So I'm going to kind of have these guys get up and talk a little bit, because I know very little about a very technical subject matter called communication. So Clyde, would you like to?
Okay. Um, when, when we had the meeting, the very first one, I had some concerns about some of the costs myself. Um, oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, hey Clyde?
Yeah.
Could you, could you get closer to a phone?
I am, they just moved, they, they just informed me I needed to move. Is that better, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and we did, so Doug came over, and he wanted me to kind of break out some of the pricing that I saw, that if you went to another way of doing it instead of sole sourcing, and that'd be breaking it out into probably four different RFPs. And, and these, I, I do believe would save you substantial amounts of money. Just quick, quickly, off the top of the head, off the top of my head, in, in your site development, you could save two hundred thousand dollars likely if you had that bid out just separately, instead of the markups that I saw, that, because I got to see quite a bit of stuff. Your shelters, there's, there's about a two hundred and fifty, I, I got two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar savings in that if it was bid out direct. With also an alternative bid, where you could go to somebody, decide to specifically for them, and it'd be another hundred thousand dollar kind of savings that you would have. And then in your civil bids, this is the part that's, the gray area where it's really hard to get a real number until you actually did the site development part, could possibly save you as much as three hundred thousand dollars. And now, as far as the Motorola versus Raycom type, type of thing, if you put it to a bid, I'm sure you would find some savings there as well, because competition breeds that kind of thing. The, the, the main, main emphasis on this would be to get a site development RFP out right away, because if you had the site development done, then you could know more about what these other numbers would be, because right now, it's, you, you have to take, that's why I say it's a gray area on the civil builds, because you have to take worst-case scenario, because you don't have any idea what your, what you're building at. You don't even, I mean, you know, the, the, they were given an acreage of, you know, forty acres, here's where the site could be, you know? I mean, it's, it's closer than that, but it's still, if you have, actually have real, real built guidelines, it's hard to bid it. We've done numerous of these, of these projects before around the state, and they're usually bid out like this. This is the first time I've seen the actual sole, sole provider for any one of them, because they usually do, as we're saying, you do a site development, then, and you can be getting your shelters and towers, you can buy your towers direct and say, there's another large amount of money to the state to save, probably close to a hundred thousand more, if they did the towers out direct, rather than, rather than just, you know, whoever's building them to buy them and then put them out. I, I think that in the long run, you, you had some more local contractors heading this thing and managing it, that's why I asked my, my friends at GSS to come, because they're awesome at this, they do this all the time, they're local, they save you money. I mean, like, right now, there's, I don't know how much in tribal, there's like fifty thousand dollars in tribal fees. When I speak with the G, that's been mandated to put in there due to Motorola's expectations, at least what was pushed down on us. And, and with their expertise, they, they, almost every site, they said they can't see why there would, there would probably be zero tribal fees in anything like that. And that's just, that's just in, for instance, in this whole ball of how this came about, you can see fifty thousand dollars saved there, and fifty thousand dollars saved there, and it doesn't take very long for very many fifty thousand dollars to add up to be a million dollars. I mean, you know, literally, so that's my take on it. I don't know what else.
Clyde, maybe tell them where you got them all. I think it was three weeks before.
Well, it was the week before you had your first meeting, I, I found out about it. Well, my brother Pat saw it on some, one of our mailings, and he, he may be able to tell you more, but he, he says, we better go find out what's going on. So we didn't know anything about it until then. That's why putting together numbers is really hairy-carry. And our numbers, some of them match very well with Motorola's, some of them, it's just, you don't even know where that number came from, so.
One other thing.
Okay.
You said the state, the state money.
I mean, the county.
Yes.
Well, I work for the state more than the counties, this county anymore.
I agree, I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No problem.
Um, would you like to talk right now, Sean, about, we think, Sean's with GSS out of, out of Des Moines?
Good. Thank you for letting us come in and talk to you guys today. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Clyde contacted me on the 31st and asked if I would be willing to come in and talk to you guys. We do a lot of tower development for both carriers and tower companies. In a turnkey situation sometimes, sometimes we just do construction management, sometimes we do site acquisition or site development, and we provide a lot of the services that Clyde had mentioned. A great example that Clyde brought up was the tribal fees. A lot of times, these large companies rely on environmental companies that don't have the most current information. Under the newest FCC regulations, there are no more tribal fees. So unless they want to come consult and be on-site for that, and they really can't even charge for that, there's nothing says they can charge for that. Up until July 1st of last year, though, they could, so they're a little bit behind the times. And our, the tribal fees were getting up near the thirty thousand dollar range roughly, but they can't do that anymore. So we do this locally, we're out of Urbandale, Iowa. Clyde called me because, as he put it best, and this is why I really want to come down here, is he goes, I'm a constituent, I'm a tax discount county, because I care, I want the budget to be right. Clyde and I have known each other almost twenty years, and that's why I work with him, because that's Clyde, that's Murphy, and Pat's the same way. I, I'm not privy to the numbers that Clyde saw, so I don't know where a lot of the site development costs, numbers were at. I can tell you roughly, I just brought some examples that we do, and when I say site development, I'm talking everything from any sort of site acquisition or permitting, A and E services, geotechnical, environmental, which would include NEPA Phase One, project management, construction management. We range right around the forty thousand dollar mark on average. Some a little lower, some a little higher, depending on the size of the project. Just to give you a reference that you could kind of use to look at those numbers. Another thing that Clyde brought up earlier, talking about not being able to really give good construction numbers out the gate without specific information, I brought an example, I can't leave it because it's proprietary, but I brought it and I whited out everything I could, of a quote of a tower, and so I know one of your towers has a two hundred and fifty-foot self-support that you're proposing, for one of my other clients. And just to give you a reference, the quote was for seventy-one thousand, six seventy-five. I don't know what Motorola quoted you for a tower price, I want to give you a reference number, though, that, this is from Saber Industries, they're also an Iowa-based tower company. But goes to what he was talking about earlier, not really knowing what to expect and how to bid this early on a construction standpoint. The original foundation design that they did off of what we call a generic environmental, called for, I'm getting that page. Four foot six diameter piers going down eighty-eight feet. And that's probably, Motorola probably got a quote very similar to this, and had to make some assumptions and found that out. After we did the geotech, our foundation design ended up being, so I got the actual design here, and this is for a tower near Albia, I tried to grab one that was close. Ended up being four foot six, but only forty-four feet deep. Again, there's a huge cost savings that we talked about by being able to use accurate, legitimate numbers and true information. The other thing that I noticed while bidding, thought of the stuff to Clyde, was on the geotactical, Motorola had suggested three boreings being done, one in each pier on a self-support tower. A self-support tower has three legs, so you have three concrete piers that are going to go down. Again, they were saying eighty-eight feet, I don't think it'll ever go that, I know the soil is in this area, it's probably going to be closer to forty to fifty feet most. We have been doing geotacs for almost thirty years. We personally don't perform them in-house, we perform them, but we analyze them, our company, it was started by geologists. We do one drilling to fifty feet at the center of tower. There's not going to be that much of a difference between a thirty-two foot, thirty-one foot span between those tower legs, not going to happen. So you would have been paying basically three times for each tower, doing a geotech. This is the, the, again, knowledge, local knowledge, that we can come in here and consult and guide, and make sure that we're doing the right things for you fiscally, from a fiscal perspective.
And to add on the, the foundations, I, I was very conservative, and I see that as potentially being a two hundred thousand dollar savings all by itself, because if we do get to the big columns, we also have the expertise, we go ahead and put in a patent here instead of the, and it saves immense amounts of money.
Patent here usually saves twenty percent on foundations.
On foundation, and if it goes to a great big one, it could save you sixty percent. And on the tower, Tower quotes that he was giving you those numbers, I know that their, their numbers were close to forty percent above that, so.
And I did bring examples of a two hundred and ninety-foot self-support, because I know four of them are, or three or four of them are, three of them are three hundred foot towers. So I do have that price, I can give you guys as well, as just as an example, a reference number. And I brought a quote for a hundred foot monopole, I can give one hundred and ten foot monopole, if I remember right. Again, they're all from Saber Industries, but at least it would give you a reference price, I'd be willing to share that with you, so that you can have that.
I don't know really what to add, and I, I, I'd hate to meet the guy that came up here and said, if you guys do this, you're going to save a kind of money, and you save a dollar eighty-seven or something. But I, just because of some anomaly we don't see, but having done this for a long, long time, and along with them, with their knowledge, they have immense knowledge in their office over there. We've, I know that it's got to be a lot less than what, what the actual price tag is right now, just because of, and I know it means a little bit more work. And some of the timelines that they, they say it takes so long to do, it, yes, it takes X amount of time, but if you put people on it right away, it doesn't end up, you're not doing one, and then the next, and then the next, you do them all at the same time, so.
A lot of the services, what we call due diligence, can't be done that way. In a perfect world, when time's not an issue, like Clyde said, do this task, wait till that's done, you know, you can move on to the next task, you have zero risk. But if you're under a time constraint in a project, which always has a start-to-finish date time, you don't always have the luxury of being able to be a hundred percent certain, you have to assume a little bit of risk. But a lot of these things do run concurrently. Great example is the NEPA, which is a federal requirement for anything that's put up with FCC licensed antennas. That's about a hundred and five day process roughly. But you can run FAA at the same time, you can kill two birds with one stone, they're, they're not dependent on each other. They are at the end, goes, if you are greater than two hundred feet, you have to do an ASR registration, there is a notification that has to go out that does apply to both, and that's about a forty-five day process after both are completed, but that's where they're dependent on each other way at the end. Permitting and zoning, I don't know how much, I know that you guys, the raw lines, I believe most of them, when I say raw lines, I mean new builds, new towers.
Greenfields is what they.
Greenfields, you want to call that. I believe it's county property, so there's no true leasing necessarily, just selecting the, the right spot for it. But zoning and permitting can also be done while those other services are going on, so that you don't have to wait till those services are done to go into zoning. So there's a lot of things you can do to help compress the timeframe a little bit, if, if you do have to use a little bit of time to re, re-put this out in an RFP. There are ways to, assuming, as long as the county's willing to assume, a little bit of risk, and we would guide on that, you know, and Clyde would too, you know? What, and I, when I say we, I mean whether we're hired or not, if you were to call me up, I would give you my best advice. That's just how we are.
Clyde said we might save a buck eighty-seven or whatever it was, but would you, would you maybe just give the group here a good estimate of what we think we might save? And Sean, I don't know if you.
I don't know the cost of the equipment, that's where.
That's exactly.
I don't know pricing Motorola's giving on the equipment, so outside of the equipment, I haven't seen all the quotes on the construction.
I, I do have a number, I'm, I'm around three-quarters of a million without your equipment tricks, and, and I, I, I feel pretty confident.
That's right, that's probably conservative.
That, that's what I think, too, that's probably conservative, what you can take off, and then if you put head-to-head on your radios, you make, you might save, who knows how much.
Which equipment are you referring to?
The Motorola equipment for the nine-one-one system.
Right.
P-25.
I, in my past life, I've, I've built towers and worked as a project manager for both Next Tower and US Cellular here locally in Des Moines area. I know what an average cost is for a typical three-hundred-foot tower, including their equipment, which is much different, though, than a nine-one-one system. And I don't know how far back your nine-one-one system is, it means all new switching equipment, you know, which is, that's where I don't have the knowledge of, those costs. So I really couldn't give you even a best case yes. And Clyde.
Best part, I can't either, I, I've said this all along, I don't know what the RFP, what the, the real, we did a, we did a very large microwave loop for Mid-American, and I know it was considerably less than what they're estimating theirs is going to be. But I don't know what they have involved in theirs as well either, you know, I mean, it's just, it's, for me, it might be apples to apples, but for what I can see, it might be apples to grapefruits even, so I don't know. But just knowing the part that I do, if you can see close to three-quarters of a million saved on this part of it, there's got to be that much you can save if it's put up to bidding it out.
Tim, did you want to collaborate on some of the things that have been said?
Well, I think it's just the, the approach that the county wants to take. Right now, you've got all this bundled up under one contractor, and I don't disagree that if you broke it up, it would probably be the same, it's exactly how much savings is, is up to debate, and I agree that there's some risk in there right now. They were talking about the construction, the site itself, and maybe sole boarding, and they can certainly, if you ended up trying to break this thing up, I don't know that I would break it up more than two pieces, radio microwave versus civil, but that's what I typically see, that's the way we typically know them, just to, and as the sole boardings, the county can certainly do those once we nail down the sites and put that information into the RFP for their own cibles as well, that would take, take doubt out for the contractors and allow them to narrow up their pricing. But again, it, as I said in the last meeting, procurement process is about, at a minimum, four months, I would get, shortening it up, and that's, that was assuming one procurement, if you move forward with, let's say, a civil procurement, we could stagger that and then do the radio procurement right behind that. Oh, yeah, I mean, the county has kind of chosen this, this path, we've been going down toward Motorola, because, you know, I'm assuming everybody wants to be on the same system, so you have to, if you're going to open this thing up, then you would prob, I would bid both parts of it at that point, but, and not, because Motorola, obviously, and they're going to pull the deal they've got on the table at the end of June, which is fine, if that's what they want to do, if you choose to go this way, so. You know, like I said, this is, if you're willing to go, if you're going to go to procurement, you've got to be willing to select either better. And that would be the Raycom Paris proposal versus a Motorola, and, I guess from a technical perspective, obviously it doesn't make any difference, but either one would work fine, and there's probably some savings there to be had, that's typically what we see in, in competitive environments, whether that's for it, to you, the decision you guys are going to have to make.
And Clyde, you said it would be four different areas, or Sean, do you break that down?
Yeah, and I got to disagree with Tim, I think that you should break them out, that way you can do your site development, and then your real, because then that's where you can make some real savings on the backside of it. You should have a site development, you should have your shelters and generators, I would definitely bid those out directly to you, because there's no reason for somebody to put thirty to forty percent on a big number like that, just to be the one that ordered it, and then go from there. But then make the responsibility in your civil build be to set those, that'd be part of this civil, so that takes it all off of you guys, it'd be in the scope of work in your civil build to set and the fire up and all of that kind of stuff. And then the actual towers, I would bid those out yourself, too, you can save a hundred thousand probably, pretty easy on the five towers that you have, doing it yourself. And then the actual civil build, so it's kind of five, depending on how you want to do it, you could do the shelters, generators, and towers together, but I don't recommend to do that, I would keep them separated, because you can, because not all, not all companies have both abilities to do so.
Hey Clyde, I'm just thinking about all the internal coordination that goes on a communication site compound, you've got the, obviously, before you start, the grading, leveling, weed mat, gravels, all the foundations, foundations for the shoulders, the foundations for the generator, the foundations for the tower itself. There's a lot of anchor coordination in there, and I just, you know, breaking it up in four pieces just seems like a lot for me, but if, I mean, if the county can, capable of managing that, that's one thing, but I don't know that they have that capability.
They, we've, we've done it in so many counties here in Iowa, it's, it's the way, it's kind of the blueprint of way things have been done. I got to admit, Warren County's kind of an anomaly that nobody's seen, even the other people that I've talked to about it, they're like, they don't understand how you can do it, and just one big thing is then you're, you're obviously going to be inflated in so many areas that those add up over time.
Right.
It, it's how hard, I mean, I, I'm not telling you guys how hard you have to work, but I mean, it's how hard the people in the county want to work too, to save potentially, you know, a million and a half dollars or whatever, who knows?
I get it to go back to whether the county wants to do one general contractor, in this case, that's Motorola to do everything, and that's kind of where you're at, and, and are you paying more for that? You are, you would pay more for that in any case, if you did one procurement like this. So that, that's kind of the decision, and then if you, you kind of went down the road a little bit with Motorola buying your console, so. And I'm not saying that couldn't be overcome in a bid, because it probably can be. There's also the Hooper Tower site for the state, if you ended up looking at it as a second vendor, here is Raycom. We had to figure out, I don't know that the state's going to allow you on that, on that Hooper site, I'm guessing not, but I don't know that. And, and the hairs, if you were to select hairs, and if you don't have that site, you have to build another tower. So that comes into play easily here, that you could build, you don't have to bid one, build one extra tower, if that's the case. That's kind of what we weighed in when we were, were looking at this, if you don't know Motorola, do you have to build a site and replace Hooper, another equip building, and ultimately, does the county end up saving any money? And that's kind of the things we're thinking about.
Tim, let me check this, this tab list, which is hard. So why is the state not allowing you to go through to use Paris raiders?
You know, Pat, I don't know the answer to that question, just be spiteful, I don't know how cooperative the state would be if you were, wanted to bring Paris equipment into that shelter as opposed to being on the state system with Motorola, they extended their coverage, I don't understand.
There is, there is a quick here, quick question for my benefit, how soon can we find out that really relevant question, the answer to it? Because if we need to build another tower and site around the tower, you know, seven hundred and fifty or a million dollars, potential savings might get zapped up pretty quick. And so, I guess that's a, that's a question that we need to get the answer to quickly. Any time line on that, or?
Who, who are we asking, if who are we asking for that?
Historically, with other systems in the state, they are separate. There are some towers that were there co-located, but they are very few and far between.
This is Pat Murphy, I don't understand that, that line of thinking, because that's similar, in my opinion, Verizon and AT&amp;T saying they're not going to get on the same tower because of technologies. They typically don't get on the same tower because they can't come to an agreement on the lease.
Right.
Look, am I off, is that Sean Hemstead?
No, that is, that is correct, and one of the things, this tower's located in the county, and if it's not on state property.
It's on state.
Is it on state property, then you don't have jurisdiction over that probably. I would say, you know, the county, you would like to think the relationship between the county and state would overcome that.
One would think, but in a, in a certain sense, I would, I would agree with you, that certainly the case here, and well, I don't know if Florida, whether they, Motorola, here's sites are located or not, but that would have, you know, given the fact that the state was not allowing an ISF-I connection, which is a. which is a connection that would provide interoperability between the Harris and Motorola systems. If they're not allowed that, I was guessing there wasn't a lot of cooperation between the, the state and, and, uh, and Harris here. I, you know, and that's not right, but that's just kind of what I was seeing. And whether they would say they're saving that space for other users on the system I don't know. So, you know, Doug would know better than I who to go out and ask that question of. But that needs, that needs a way into your calculation.
It, it does. My second, my other second concern is, uh, who voted on that Tuesday meeting was seven to two? And, uh, I, I don't know if I have a great sense that all of the mayors, what I'm gonna just propose to do is the smaller communities that might have less taxing ability, less levy rate, less ability to pay for the radios. I'm not confident that those mayors who voted aye for that, to move it over to aye, understand that there's still a pretty good likelihood, um, that they're gonna be responsible in some shape or form for their own, for their own radios that they may or may not be able to pay for. So that's, that's also in the back of my mind as a concern. And then my final concern is I'm willing to look at anything that saves the county money. They tax theirs money, but it's just a wash and we waste time. That's, that's not good. That would be, that'd be a loss in my book. And so, I guess I need to know about the state tower. If we went down a different path, can we connect to it, that Hooper? And two, how much additional time would bidding out four different RFPs for the project? Um, how much time is that adding to the equation? And if it's a little bit, I'm not, I'm not as concerned. If it's a lot of it and the money's about the same, then that's back to the county because we don't have serviceable towers and a system that works, we wasted time. I've also learned quickly that, um, while I don't like to pay more than, than we should, and I'm certainly as duchy as you get from Pella, I hate paying more than we need to for anything. Um, the cost of construction ever in my mind goes down. Everything goes up. I mean, this whole thing, a couple of years ago, and then there was quotes for five million and now it's, now we're looking at nine or eight. And so I don't, I don't think that we're, it's gonna be cheaper to build in two years if that's what it takes versus today. And so those are my, my general thoughts, my learnings. So I'll be quiet again and continue to listen, but those are my general concerns and thoughts. What I'm hoping to do, correct?
Yeah. Now, if, uh, at the Hooper site, if, uh, state is willing to do that, then of course that costs us off the table. That was assumed. Since you're not building out part of the system, they would, state would let you, let Warren County own there over the Harris system, then that would be at a lease, like you're gonna lease, we're planning on right now leasing the, uh, the Mercy Tower, use of the Mercy Tower from, from Mercy Tower. Um, so, and just so you know, those earlier quotes, a couple of years ago, around the five or six million point, were one, assuming that you were using almost all leased facilities, which would have raised your continuing cost. Uh, and now you're building most of these facilities. And, and towers are not, and, and towers are not fifteen-year assets. Like, say, the radio equipment itself, uh, they're more like forty or fifty-year assets. So you have to look at them over, their value over a longer period of time.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, at this rate, you, I did check with Motorola and, and asked them, um, uh, last week whether they would extend this deal, that, that they've got some discounts on there offered. He said they would not, or would not, and I was a little bit surprised by that. So whatever direction you're gonna do, if you still wanna keep this Motorola deal, we need to move with, with haste and figure out whether, uh, we can get on that, uh, Hooper Tower if, if it were not a Motorola, if it were Harris. And if not, how that impacts your decisions.
Clyde, it's totally how we make, how we make a, a different decision from that vote. After knowing whether or not we have to build another one, one point one million dollar tower. Cause they're good at, like, you know, we don't know that, then, um, I don't know how we mediate from our course. But I'm willing to consider it. That's just my take. I'm one of three, so Crystal and Doug can chime in anytime.
Well, one thing I'm a little confused about, Aaron, is I don't think a tower is a million and a half.
Correct.
I, I tend to agree it'd be substantially less than that to, to, for your build of, of a new site. But, um-
Yeah, I think a, a tower and equipment building, uh, you could assume, you know, a fair number, probably seven hundred fifty thousand or seven, seven hundred fifty.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and, and if, my overall, I, I get it, but my overall point was if we're talking about savings in the seven hundred to a million and a half, and we have to build another tower, let's say it's seven hundred and fifty, and we might be a wash. And then my other concern would be timing, timing. I mean, if it's a wash and we add six months to the project, that's not good. That's a loss. If, if we save five hundred thousand and we add a month or two, the win. And so I'm willing to consider all, I just need to know on the, on the Hooper site, like, this afternoon, or Motorola. I don't know if Doug can figure that out or someone, but-
Doug's gonna make the call on that. Um, Doug, can you also address the current state of our system now?
It's failing on a daily basis. We're relying on copper phone lines to do the back haul and with all the moisture we have, it got ecstatic. So there's content, there's constant issues with it.
Is that what you're experiencing, Sheriff?
Yes. And per Tom Lampy with the State Issigs Board, a texting, no, I cannot use a hundred percent. Attorneys with the state will allow it, uh, she's gonna have to go to the Harris system.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, we have that answer. Did you hear that, Aaron?
I didn't catch it, no.
Uh, the sheriff texted, uh, Tom Lampy, who is the chair of the Issigs Board. And he said, um, the attorneys will not allow the county with a Harris system to go on the state Hooper site.
Okay. So then we mentally have to consider that there's probably another seven fifty and another tower built, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But you would have the savings of the co-location costs, which would be minimal, so it wouldn't be the full amount.
Correct.
There's also the potential if there is another tower, it's, I don't know. I don't know the exact spot of the Hooper, so it's, I don't know if anybody's looked into other towers as well to co-locate on.
My concern would be the location and the height of the Hooper Tower is three hundred and forty-five.
Yeah.
In a very prime, almost the middle of the county.
Yeah.
I don't know who would be able to get something so-
That good.
-well-placed.
You could find out in probably an hour, I could let you know, because you're doing ASR search on the, if, if the coordinates are listed in the proposal that you got printed from.
It's got GPS.
Then we just do a simple ASR search of tower. If you need that height, all the towers over two hundred feet have to be registered, so it shows you right there to be the distance from that tower.
Thank you. All right. Um, any-
Crystal, this is Pat Murphy, I'd like to jump in again.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, I'd like to get back to the numbers, um, for the actual radios. We had, we were told that the Motorola bid would be three point five million for the cibles. Then there was gonna be, uh, the radios and all of Motorola's part. If it's not a ninety and a half million dollar project, that leaves them six million. I've never seen that broken out. Has anybody seen that, have you seen that broken out, I asked you, or Clyde asked you that question? You said it was in an Excel sheet.
Yes, and it, it's, it has somewhat, it, it's broken out. It's not broken out very far, but it, it's, uh, it's broken out somewhat. I thought I sent it on to you, Pat, sorry about that. Um, it's saved on our server. Uh, but it's, it's, it isn't broken out very far. And it does match up on the cibles side of it. When you do the math, it comes pretty close to what, what, what is, was said at the meeting and what the numbers we came up with from them, so. But the radio, I don't know what any of it means, cause it's-
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where I'm, I'm curious also. Again, if we're looking at savings on the construction side of it, but putting it up for RFP on the radio side, we're not really digest or dissecting, uh, what possible savings would be, uh, seen there if it was put out to RFP and Harris gave back with pricing there. Is it by-
Good point. You know, there's a lot of mon, there's a lot of money there to be, to be saved, I mean, potentially.
Yeah, basically double our, our price, and that's radios. When we did that microwave hop from literally about Des Moines all the way to the city from the American Energy, we bought the dishes and, and did all the work, and these were eight and ten-foot dishes. And, uh, you know, it was a six million dollar project, but we were installing radios, paid for. And it was many, many sites, I can assure you that. But I'm just curious what this six million dollars was to buy. A yield floor.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So Motorola's provided this radio quote. Um, they obviously have sold this system to other cities, counties, et cetera, priced on very similar. Have you guys gone out and asked those other cities, counties, et cetera, what kind of budget it costs them in the recent time? Is it pretty consistent across the board? Okay, I was just curious.
Union, Page, Montgomery, we looked at their proposals and it's-
Very similar.
Pretty similar.
Cause that's a lot of times, a lot of times people just won't even take that, you guys have, obviously, that's good, really do the homework, so. I was-
Well, our, our, our price came back at, actually, at, um, ten point nine. And as the commission, we have to separate the commission from the border supervisors cause now it sits in the border supervisor's lot, where before it was in the commission. When it came back to the commission, the final price from Motorola was ten point nine. We pushed back and we got it down to the nine point five that it's at now. So, that being considered, back when the bond passed for the courthouse and jail, we had to move nine-one-one out. Um, the board decided to go with Motorola at that time, which the, um, nine-one-one and, uh, the commission were actually going through an RFP process between Harris and Motorola to try to get the best price.
Right.
But when the bond passed and we had to buy those consoles, it turned this into a sole source. So that's why we have gone throughout the plan. So, and at the, um, ten point nine meeting, it was brought up by Tim that we go to, uh, break this out and between cibles and radio and microwaves. Um, I think that that was a choice that the commission made based on the knowledge from the nine-one-one users that our system is failing, we need to do something now. And with the price having come down, um, over a million dollars, we decided that this was the best course of action. Now, the border supervisors, obviously, is more concerned with the budget than we are using. So with the commission's, um, recommendation, we are now trying to get a better price. And that going through Motorola to do that would be our best option. Um, but they said that this price is firm. So our, Tim, uh, who's on the line, is with Omnicom, who is our consultant, who is helping us throughout this whole process. They went over our system, told us what we needed in phase one. Now, phase two, they were splitting it out to RFP, but of course it went to sole source. And now they are the consultants who have been hired to help us with this implementation. Um, so he's the resource that we have gone to with all of this. And of course, his recommendation at the, um, nine point five meeting was let's break this out into cibles and radios and microwave, or you go with Motorola.
Actually, um, this is Shawn Young. I actually kind of agree with, with Tim, I think, is, that, um, is the pricing that Motorola offers you on the radios contingent upon them doing sole sourcing? Or is it static, separate? Could it not have changed no matter how you go?
They have, um, discounts tied in. Okay, we talked about state pricing in the beginning. Um, state pricing doesn't mean that the whole thing is in half if we go with Motorola. It's if we buy the top-of-the-line equipment from them, then they'll give us a half price. Um, however, that is something I would like to go back to the commission and ask if we don't get the top-of-the-line radios, which we're talking eight thousand dollar radios, half price is four thousand. Can we go with an eighteen hundred dollar radio, save the county money that way? But again, that would be a reserve.
Well, where I was going with this was if your radio pricing and discounts aren't contingent upon the cible, or I think Tim's calling it the cible portion, the actual construction of the tower, development, construction, including the tower, shelter, generator, get inside, prep, ready for radio installation. If that is not contingent on that, I would agree with Tim that, I think you're gonna save actually more. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, just Clyde kinda noticed the numbers, but what was the average markup on the development side?
Oh, to the point of where Motorola's picking it, I'm gonna say forty-plus percent.
Okay, three point five million times point four.
I think those were ten numbers too, that you had come back and told us that.
I think there's your savings right there, um.
But it's the pricing that we're getting now.
That way you can stay with Motorola radios too.
Right, right.
And so that you're not gonna have the conflict with the Hooper Tower, but still be able to, and be able to continue moving forward and not losing time, maybe just RFP out, the cible portion.
Right, which is, is what we have considered. Um, my, my other concern about this, when you talk about, um, how would you use that last one? What was the discounts tied, or, or Tim, what was the amount of the discounts tied into the new, um, nine point five offer? There were many free things that they put in, now I will say that in quotation. Um, what was that total amount? Tim?
Crystal, I need to understand your question a little better.
Okay.
The, the discount was the, um, the hundred and one point four eight million discount off the grand total. Now, that was off the original amount, so what, what is your question exactly?
There were, uh, additional discounts that they were giving us, um, equipment upgrades, uh, and other, yep, this is it right here. Uh, Megan gave this copy to me. It's a four hundred and eleven thousand dollar discount. It was for the API fee for, okay, that was for the maintenance. They gave us, no. Um, API for two to eleven years. Uh, they put that in there for thirty-seven five. Event tied API fee for implementation, uh, forty-nine thousand. Okay, wait a second. Um, that was where the county was then going to be responsible for taking down the equipment. That was one of the discounts that we got. We're taking on more responsibility and Motorola is not. Okay, no, that was-
So, so some of, some of the discounts that we got in the last, you know, went over in the last presentation, uh, let's see here, okay. Um, the really additional discount, they gave us, um, there was a ten percent off relocation of console, eleven thousand. Another, essentially ten percent, another eleven thousand six forty-eight off of the basic console. So it got that back down to a more reasonable range, given an additional ninety-five thousand. So, um, that's how we got that nine four fifty-six, nine forty-eight number. Now, uh, we're still working with Motorola, there's another thirty-two thousand there that we think is the math error on their part. It should go down by thirty-two thousand or more, but that's, that's kind of small potatoes in this number. But this is still a lump for debate on that.
It was the no-cost add-ons that I'm referring to, that they're putting in with this new price.
Okay. Um, uh, API fee for that was a login recorder, uh, and another login recorder related discount. There's thirty-seven five, forty-nine thousand. Uh, high-capacity batteries, another ten thousand, they're, they're, I'm increasing the price to provide those. And of course- ten thousand, they're, they're not increasing the price to provide those, and of course the microwave, uh, maintenance from years two to eleven, three hundred fifteen thousand that they, that was in there, a reasonable proposal that is now in there, so all total, that was four hundred eleven thousand five hundred, uh, no cost add-ons, uh, in this last round of negotiations.
Okay. All right, so that is tied into this, as well as the scope changes that they, um, had us take on, so.
Yeah. No, obviously, some of those, the ones that are related to maintenance, of, uh, three hundred fifteen thousand and thirty seven five, or are not included in that capital cost total, there's, those are things that would have impacted your maintenance total over years two to eleven.
Right, and we're not including the consoles that we purchased last year for the nine one one move either, so.
Yeah. During negotiations, they clarified that, um, again, there will be some lapse in which you have to buy car, uh, maintenance for those consoles, after that, uh, certainly also what's included in their, uh, annual cost of year two to eleven.
Okay, so two for, through eleven has the maintenance for the consoles included? Is that what you're saying?
Right, but, uh, the time that goes in between when your warranty date expires and the whole system gets accepted, that you will have to, I guess, supplement to a separate, uh, maintenance agreement.
In, in other words, um, uh, your warranty began one year after, or will elapse one year after they were, the consoles were accepted, and that date was something in November?
I'd be sorry.
Yeah, it's something around November, so between November nineteenth and going forward until your new system is in place, there'll be an additional maintenance fee that, that we haven't talked to Motorola about yet.
Okay. Can we talk to them today about that?
Sure, you, and I guess we just have to, we have to assume a timeline, the maintenance on those four consoles, we can, we can get you the number on that.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other further questions or issues about?
On, on the, the money that they gave you back on the last time, so they gave you roughly four hundred and eleven thousand dollars?
That, that was just for the add-in bonus.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, but that's, if you take the build of the rest of it away, that four hundred and eleven comes back, so does that not raise a giant red flag to anybody sitting in this room?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm gonna just say, here's the other part, and we've already shown you what the savings are on your civil side, building, buying, buying stuff.
Right, okay. Well, um, I don't think we were gonna make the decision today about this, this was just a discussion, but as a board, we have, um, some homework that needs to be done to get this finalized in our mind. Any further comments? Doug? Need anyone else wanna offer insight or opinion?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd like to, I think it'd be appropriate to do another special meeting this week, tomorrow, well, too soon to do it tomorrow, but Friday maybe, that way, too, Doug and I can talk about our thoughts, we, we gotta figure it out sooner rather than later, but we can figure out the Hooper number confidently, maybe we already know that, and then get some numbers in front of us, and then we can sort of make a decision, I don't wanna make one fast this moment in time.
Right, we'll have to.
But I'd like, I'd like to figure it out sooner rather than later, next week, that's my two.
Okay, um, we'll do it next week, so that all parties involved here can, can be here. Did that work out?
Well, I'll have to check everybody's calendars to coordinate, but I, it kind of factors into your next point, which is the bond timing, because if you do go ahead with Motorola, and they're not gonna extend that six twenty five, you have a very limited timeframe with which to get this taken care of, so if you can meet Friday afternoon, um, okay. We'll work something, I'll, I'll work something out, but it'll take me some time to get it coordinated with, there's a lot of, a lot of players in this.
We have, we have, um, just information for you guys on the phone, um, the bonding deadlines are approaching, and if we are going to go with Motorola, that is something to consider. So, um, Murphy is not able to meet on Friday, um, but I'm hoping you can get something together for us, um, so that we will have it at that meeting.
I've got most all my numbers put together already.
Great, okay.
That's what I brought, so you can see it.
Thank you.
Crystal, is there anything you need from us beside maintenance for the consoles, for the overlap period, or is there other things that we could show you that would help you make a decision?
Is there anything else anyone can think of, sure, Doug?
The only concern I have is the Warren County Joint Underwood Service Board, which is representative of all the response jurisdictions, they forwarded the first part of this plan, it went on to the Emergency Management Commission, which is represented by all the mayors, the sheriff, and a board supervisor rep. In turn, that proposal got moved forward and up to the, to the board now, and I, I just, we were going down an RFP road, and we got steered differently, we tried to include some of this in on the courthouse bond, and that was turned down also. But we truly have, you have to, you have a board and a commission that have brought this to the board supervisors for approval, with representatives from the entire county, including all the responders and the mayors. I hate to see it, I, I understand the, the diligence on the cost, uh, but some of this is a time restraint, and some of this is public safety. And we've negotiated with Motorola, this is the best price they say they're gonna give us. So if we go to RFP, is that, I, I mean, to what extent do we keep dragging this out? And that's just my concern.
All right, thank you, David, I think, right now it's cost versus, um, public safety. Um, all right, well, um, I thank y'all for your time for this part of the meeting, um, we are going to move on to the discussion of upcoming bond, um, issuance.
Uh, we can drop off now?
Yes, sir. Um, I'll probably need you to call after this meeting.
Thank you, everyone who was on the call, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're moving on to item two, discussion of upcoming bond issuances, um, the Justice Center second issuance, nine one one communication project, and the secondary road referendum.
We had talked previously about meeting in early June to kind of get our timelines in place, everything that needs to happen, as well as when we met with Motorola and they gave us our timeline, it was, we gotta jump on it, um, if it's gonna happen, so, um, had, uh, Dave Davidson in Northwood in the court here to, or bonding attorney, to go over different options, um, I started putting together kind of a timeline to break it down for the board on all of the things that need to happen, um, to make, to make this happen, like the, um, we can start with the Justice Center, we need to, um, the second issuance, bid letting will be going out this month, we should have good results back in the morning of July, we're, um, starting in August, um, so we'll have a lot more invoicing coming in once that construction starts. Projected depletion of our first bond proceeds is December, um, of this year, so sometime this summer, we need to be issuing that second so that they're in place for when all of those invoices come through. Um, so I'll turn it over to him then, on how we need to proceed with getting, moving forward with that second issuance.
Sure, yeah, uh, appreciate you folks having me here, uh, once again today, um, I've got a timeline that basically piggybacks off of Megan's timeline from the Justice Center, just wanna pass those around the room. Um, with the, with the bid letting, bid opening being at the end of June, um, I think it makes sense to kind of get things moving with the issuance of the, of the second bond issue, um, shortly thereafter, once you've decided that you're proceeding, uh, with a bid, um, that would place, um, refer to what it was, thanks. So that, that would put us approving a preliminary official statement, um, probably at your June six, sorry, July sixteen meeting, um, and then, uh, proceeding forward from there. Um, once again, we got a bond rating with S and P, um, look at pricing the bonds, uh, probably the end of July or early August, uh, we could do a bond purchase agreement August sixth or August twentieth, uh, we have the bond purchase agreement August sixth, uh, we could, uh, move forward with authorizing issuance at your next meeting on the twentieth, and that would put us, uh, closing September tenth, which would kind of fall right in line with, uh, with Megan's timeline. Um, I think the, the Justice Center issuance is pretty straightforward, um, I think it makes a lot of sense to go ahead and just do the full twenty million now, rates are once again historically low, um, and so, and, and we, we could play the game where you split things up and try to do the bank qualified issuance, which we did the first issue, which made a lot of sense, uh, in this case, um, you know, you could see rates, interest rates move up substantially in the next four, five, six months, um, that could negate the bond, uh, bank qualified play, so I think it makes a lot of sense to go ahead and do the full twenty point formulae and just bring us the bond proceeds. Um, we, uh, had, the county had, um, found from a few banks that you've invested bond proceeds with historically that we could probably actually get pretty close to the arbitrage yield currently, with yield curve being as high as it is, so.
Yes. Go ahead.
No, I don't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, that's.
Well, the only reason I wanted to jump in there, a couple of things, I agree, go ahead and issue them, if they can spend the money within the arbitrage spend down period, so what's the completion estimated date? For the construction.
It'll take two years.
Okay, so, yeah, 'cause, 'cause otherwise you run into some potential payments you have to make to the treasury for the investment of, uh, proceeds for a longer period than they wanna see, so I agree with Nate, as long as we can meet the spend down, and then the other point.
What is the spend, I mean, what's the?
Well, there, there are different exceptions, you're not gonna meet the five million dollar exception, so that's off the table, you're gonna issue more than that by this one issue. Um, so there's basically gonna be two that could apply, there's an eighteen month and a twenty-four month exception to rebate, um, you'd be probably looking at the twenty-four month, and you've gotta meet targets that aren't too bad, I, I mean, it's X percent within twelve months, X percent in eighteen months, and then the rest of it's spent by the end of the twenty-four months with it, you can pick, I think, a two percent retainage or, you know, some sort of a, you know, fluff at the end. Um, it sounds like you can, but I just wanted to do a reality check, because it was, if you said three years or four years, then, you know, we would really wanna back off doing it all once.
Do it, do it now, I'm gonna do another time.
Yeah, and, and the other, and, and while you're at it, since we just spent a considerable amount of time talking about potentially issuing money for the towers, and if you're going to be non-bank qualified anyway, get it all done at one time, pay me one time to do a bond opinion, pay Nate one time to do his work, you know, have one underwriter's discount, you know, figure it out, and, and it's gonna be a much more attractive issue too, because now you're up to probably thirty million and change, which is, I know that's a lot of money, but in the investment world, you're gonna get bigger bidders, it's not gonna be the same group of bidders on thirty million as it might be on twenty or ten, or especially if you come back and do nine point five by itself, not that that's small, but that's not like thirty to J P Morgan or some other investment, investment company, so, and, and you save a lot of transactional cost that way. So, so I think, I, I think, um, a couple of things, not to take over the discussion, I'll be quiet in a second here, but, um, you are under a bit of a timeframe to get the authorization side of the radio tower thing going, and so if you could agree to a not to exceed number, which doesn't mean you're going to issue that full amount, but that means that's our outside number for hearing purposes, get it done, have that in your back pocket along with the election for the courthouse and jail, and then, and then the legal side of getting it authorized is, is all behind you, and now you're down to how can we get the best deal, how can we get the sale scheduled at the best time, how can we get the best bidding done, um, you're already gonna be over bank qualification, which is only ten million, so it's a good time to just take the hit and be done with it, instead of having it happen maybe two years in a row. So there's lots of reasons to, and rates are really good right now, I mean, so, um, if you can meet the spend down requirements, which is where I started, I mean, I, I am obligated to say, if the towers are gonna take four years to get built, then no, this is a horrible idea, just stick with what you can spend in two years, but if you're gonna get this all done in about a two-year period, get it packaged together and save the money. So, I'll be quiet, sorry, but, but I felt like that was so integral to the timing that I didn't wanna not get it put in, and now I'll be able to get it back to you.
No, that's, that's great, I, I agree completely, that was more of the notes I just made, was to hold, go to hold the hearing for the communication tower, because that doesn't obligate you to even borrow any money, but it gains you the authorization to issue the money if you decide to proceed with Motorola, and we were able to tie it in with the Justice Center financing, that could make a lot of sense. And even the secondary road shop, election goes well, and that gets approved, and in that case, if we issued everything this year for Justice Center and nine one one, secondary road shop would be bank qualified, so we could a little bit of benefit there, keeping them separate, so, um, the, the, I think the big hangup with the nine one one communications financing is the, uh, the twenty-five percent, uh, kind of prepayment to Motorola that's due in July, if the county feels like you can swing that with cash, or if we need to do some sort of interim financing, I know something that Motorola was doing at one point was offering kind of lease financing, and a lot of times it was zero percent interest for the first year, whatever, I don't know if that's.
And I did talk to Brian Flynn this morning with Motorola, and asked him about that, um, he said we would be able to lease, but there would not be zero percent interest, that is not an option.
Okay.
It's really just the lease is there to extend the timeframe, but we would pay interest.
Okay, did he say what the rate was?
He did not.
Okay, all right.
Um, so he did say that was an option to do that, and as far as, so the way that Motorola has their pricing on the system, they expect certain amounts at certain timeframes within, and it's twenty-five percent is due thirty days after the acceptance of the, um, so once we pull the trigger, then they expect, um, you know, two million dollars by July, which Nate had mentioned you could do, um, fund balance, you could use the fund balance to pay it, and then pay back the fund balance once you've issued bonds, um, you would be, um, you have the room, um, within your fund balance on the general fund, um, you spend about three million, um, expenditures and debits in the general fund, and that goes to others, so if by the time within September that we got paid back that money, um, but it would be close, or unassigned fund balances, but since we're not planning on paying out that assignment anytime soon either, there is some room, so, um, it is an option if the board would like to do that, that they could make that down payment, and then that kind of extends that timeframe for issuing the bonds.
Right, and in that case we'd have a reimbursement resolution in order to allow the county to pay yourself back with future bond proceeds, so.
That's true, yeah, and that's easily done.
All right. Done?
I'm good. So, so if you, and, and again, I, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other, because you do have, the only real time crunch you have right now, since your money will last through December, it sounds to me like the big time crunch is the Motorola contract, which may or may not matter if you split up part of it and just buy their radios, I don't know what that means to you, if you lease things, I don't know what that means to you.
As far as their deadline, in June, uh, twenty-fifth, that's just a purchase agreement that we need to sign, um, it's not the funding, but the funding isn't until the end of July, you're saying?
I, I would though get the hearing out of the way before you sign that, it's a big contract, yeah, so.
Absolutely.
But, but, um, peace officer, communication equipment, and emergency services systems are essential county purpose, so not less than four, more than twenty days notice and a hearing. You, you can't, you don't wanna short circuit the hearing though, I mean, you have to really consider it on that day, so.
Aaron, did you hear that?
I did.
The timeframe that you need to prepare the paperwork for notes of the publication, because they're kind of the timeframe of the publication deadlines and such. If I had it to the paper by the 12th, the notes were published on the 19th, the board could have a hearing on the 24th. Be able to approve by the 25th for Motorola. So all that, I mean, I would have to have that.
Yeah, we can meet that schedule.
But it doesn't have to specify Motorola, so you're just saying upwards, you're going to issue upwards of 9.5 million for essential county purpose bonds, but it doesn't contract you with Motorola.
Not at all, no, in fact, it will, it will basically tell the public the source of repayment, the maximum amount that would be issued, not the, not the actual amount, but the maximum amount that would be issued, and what it's for, which we would use the broad statutory language of peace officer communication equipment and other emergency services systems, or I can't exactly remember how, I don't know, systems doesn't sound right, but anyway. That's what our hearing would be for, and it would be for that project. And if you figured out a way to do the project for 6 million, you would just have the excess authority that you never used. That's not a binding, you have to do, it's what you can do up to.
Aaron, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, thank you, alright, I was just wondering if you were catching on to... Okay, thank you.
So that, that just leaves you the flexibility to zig or zag, or start over, or go straight ahead, whatever you want. It just allows the financial side of things to, to be in place for when you've made your other decisions.
Well, how does that affect, so, we spoke with Mark on Friday in regards to the legal options available for funding the 911 communications under the essential county purpose. And, you want to go into your, there's...
Yeah, I mean, I'll just give you the 40,000 foot view, and you guys can follow up with what you want. But it seems to me that, given where you're at right now, there are about three ways to deal with. And all I'm going to focus on right now are the fire department radios. Everything else, I think, you've already decided, the towers are the towers. Although maybe you have one or more or less, depending on what you decide for today's discussion, but throw that aside. With regard to the fire department radios that are needed in the county, the three ways that make sense to me are everybody throws in their own, their own money to buy their radios, that's an option. A close cousin of that is the county issues to buy all the radios for everyone, but then under a 2080 agreement with each of the others, they, they make an obligation to pay you back for their share. Or you just treat it as an essential county purpose to have all of them provided with radios for the fire departments, and you put them into the bond issue and just have a countywide tax, which is going to get paid by everybody in the county anyway. And the advantage of that is the small towns who have very, very limited debt capacity don't have to worry about it anymore. It's going to be a county levy, countywide. It'll be the same levy, you know, in and outside the cities, and so it's not like there's an urban rural issue. The only possible issue there, this is political, not legal, but those who have already bought radios for their fire departments might say, gosh, what about us? Well, maybe something could be done to say, we understand, and so, since your taxpayers are footing the bill here, we're going to set aside a certain amount of money for your next set of radios, or your maintenance, or whatever. And so you'll get the economic equivalent of everyone else. It seems to me there's probably a way to make that fair and work for everyone, and still have the advantages of a single bond issue, less cost of issuance, debt capacity issues for the small cities. If you really want to get it done, that would be a way to, to move it ahead.
And I think politically, as you suggested, we'd probably struggle with Indianola and Norwalk.
Indianola's also a part of this. We're getting, supplying 62 radios for...
Okay, they hadn't already got there.
I think Norwalk...
The law enforcement had, and Norwalk has.
These, yeah, I think Norwalk's fire is the only fire that has already prepared radios. And, and that's why this really isn't a lawyer's job to say, but it seems like you could figure out a way to say, we understand, and here's what we're going to do to make that equitable to Norwalk. But, you know, that's for you to figure out, so.
That's a good point, and there's always the workaround. I guess that Norwalk doesn't love that they've paid, it seemed like they're going to pay twice, but there's a workaround. Or some being in the middle that makes sense and gets the jackpot, and so...
The nice thing about electronics is they wear out faster than we like, and there's always the next generation coming along. And there's probably going to be a way to say, you've got credit or something, and it'll all work out fairly for everybody, so.
Yeah.
So depending on how they do that, do you have to change the language of the resolution?
Not really, I mean, well, if we go to option one, where everybody fronts their own share, the county would issue a very small, probably for just the county's share. And then it would have to come back and issue for all the townships, because that's the way that works. We talked about it at an earlier meeting. The board ends up issuing at the request of the townships. So that gets cumbersome, but, so the answer is you'd have a whole bunch of authority you don't use for, for option one. If you go option two, it's going to look just the same. There's going to be these underlying 2080s that require people to make payments, but you still fronted the bond, and you've got it, to the bondholder, there's a debt service levy to pay for it all. You just aren't going to levy it all, because you're going to be getting payments from others under a 2080. So that one stays the same. Third one, you know, it's, it's the same as option two. You've issued, there's a debt service levy, but you are going to use the debt service levy in lieu of the payments coming from other places, so. So really, I think you could go ahead with that hearing, and it wouldn't really mess up any of the three.
They still have some room to...
Yeah, you can still figure out how you want to do it.
...do. So that would get that all in place, or at least having it in place if you decide to go with Motorola and move forward that way?
Yeah, and, and I think, I think Jeff and Nate will tell you that regardless of how you end up paying for it, a GO, since we do have an essential county purpose that fits it, is going to probably yield everyone the lowest interest cost. I mean, in Iowa, the, the bondholders look at it at service levy and say, that's about as secure as I can get from a government body.
And for DA David, is it fair that, a fair statement that rates have come down in the last three months?
They have, yeah. Yeah, generally speaking.
I mean, they're, they're cruising in the right, in the right direction from my take, and we've obtained your treasury notice, so I'm guessing debt from counties and municipal bond debt is probably also coming down at least to some extent, which is wonderful for us.
Yeah, that's...
Is that fair?
That's correct, yep. And I agree with Mark as well, in that if the county issues one bond for all the communities in the county, that's going to be the most economical countywide, because each of these communities would have to issue debt to be able to pay for their radios individually. They're each probably going to have to pay more. Another bond attorney for their, their, their opinion on each individual issue. They're going to have some financial professional offering them advice, likely. The rates are going to be higher, because on these smaller issues, it's probably just going to go to a local bank, and the rate's probably going to be closer to 3.5 or 4% in that case. The county's rate's going to be a lot lower than that, so.
And maybe...
Yeah, what, 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 pay money for everyone on this thing and do one would be my very strong preference.
There's another...
Very strong, because I think, I think if we, if we issue 30 million of debt, we're going to get big players bidding on it, and the rate will come down.
There's, there's another non-financial aspect to the county doing it with option two or three, especially three where there's no payback, because if you're a smaller community and you have a constitutional debt limit of 5% of your 100% valuation, it's a very small number, and they will have other public safety and public health issues arise like water, sewer, the, you know...
Streets.
Police, streets. They're, they're, they're already going to be hard pressed to find the money to pay for other things that the public needs in their community. So throwing another debt on top of that, not only pinches them on their capacity to do it legally, but it also just practically makes it hard for them to, you know, to pay for other services, so.
And I don't, I don't know where Crystal and Doug are on it, and I know this will be right in the face of Norwalk interests, but I'm really inclined for option three. Otherwise, we're going to lose. Smaller communities have no shot of, of either, some of them are so small, they, they can't even issue debt. And that 5% is not going to buy radios, whether we buy $5,000 radios or $3,000, or $2,000 radios, they're not going to be able to buy 20 of them, so.
And the same people will be...
Well, with some sort of a, with some sort of a credit for, hey, when, when the future happens and they, they become obsolete in, in our ledger book, and of this board, then we make it right with those that have already bought some, to some extent. True it up a little bit. Maybe that'll work, I don't know.
I knew you could say something about creating some kind of account based on the price that possibly Norwalk has spent on their radios.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know the, the right answer to it, and, and again, it's kind of, I live in the county, so I'll throw this in as a resident. You know, and I don't live in Norwalk, so it's, but if you're Norwalk, you, you have already made an investment, so you, you want to feel like if we're going to be debt service levying like everyone else for their stuff, how's that work for us? And so the answer might be to say, we recognize that, and, and, but you're going to need repairs, you're going to need updates, you're going to need things in the future. So we'll set aside what would have been your rough share had you participated now with the others. And when you need those things, the account will be available for you to draw on to, you know. We wouldn't use bond proceeds to do that, I mean, that, that's, I just talked about how you got to get them spent, and that would violate that, but you could probably figure out a way to say, all is well, because we took that into account, and, and you're going to be treated fairly when you need it. And, and that's kind of how taxes work anyway. When you build a bridge on the far side of the county, I might never drive over it, but I still have to pay for it, because I'm a county resident. That's, there's a bit of that going on too. But I think, I think here where you could point at a number and say, yeah, but we're the only ones. Maybe the thing to do is to figure out an equitable way to recognize that, so.
And I, I 100% agree with you, I will just add this to the equation, because we're recorded, and I live in Norwalk, and those are my people. They are on webcam, so the whole shoot mat, to some extent, bothered them, and they were already annoyed enough that the county system wasn't working for them, and so they're, they are paying beyond their share. I just don't want to blow up the deal, because Hartford and Hackworth and Lakona and Milo and all these other places, where we might have a literal emergency, where a radio would be helpful, that works. You know, potentially there's a Norwalk resident down there. And so I'm, I'm agreeable to get something done, I just want to make sure that we're being somewhat equitable, and it might not be dollar for dollar, that's fine. But that, that's their perspective, is we're on webcam, because the county, county system's awful. We bought our own radios, and now we're going to pay for the whole shoot mat, that's why Tom's a hard no. And probably will continue to be so, but it just is what it is.
Yeah, and, and again, just in my role as a resident, the other thing that occurs to me is that most of the fire departments have agreements to help each other.
General aid agreements, I agree.
And so...
That's what, that's what intertwines the web, to make, you want to have your radios working, you're helping out, you know, Martinsdale, or St. Mary's, or, you know, Lakona, or wherever you're going, I agree.
And also, and also for the safety of the Norwalk firefighters who are at a scene, maybe needing more help, even if it's not their problem, so. You know, that's, the reality is, everybody kind of goes together on those things and tries to make sure emergencies are dealt with. And so I, I think, I think there's got to be a fairness to it.
You're not, yep, I agree, you're not losing me on it, I'm just pointing out the obvious, because I want it to be said. But if we can do some workaround, takes into some consideration the contribution that's already been made, then I think that, that would satiate Norwalk, at least enough in my mind if they want to do it, so.
Okay, so it sounds to me we'll proceed with having Mark draw papers and following this timeline for the 911 issuance of the 9.5. Now, my only question would be, if you're going to put a cap and amount for Norwalk, you need more than the 9.5. If you want to put it in account, or do you just issue it at like...
I, I don't want to, I don't want you to use bond proceeds for anything you do for Norwalk, because it won't get spent fast enough, and then you'll violate an arbitrage rate.
So that doesn't change anything with that, that's just agreement off to the side?
Yeah, and these aren't to issue anything, these are just to get the authority. That's all we're worried about right now. Nate may come back to you in a couple of months after you've worked through some of the issues we spent the first part of the meeting talking about, and say, let's, let's slide our schedule back, you're not ready. And you have money until December on the, on the part you've already been obligated on anyway, so let's move it back to the fall. That, none of this is cast in stone, we need to make it make sense. The only issue about timing is rates are good right now, so, but that's, who knows? Who knows where rates are going to go?
I, I will say on the 9.5, you want to probably set that a little bit higher than that, just to accommodate for cost of issuance and any other sliding contingencies that you run into with your negotiations with Motorola. So I don't know what that number needs to be, maybe it's 10 million or 10 and a half million. I'd say something north of what the actual obligation is, though. And like Mark said, it's, it's a cap, it's not any obligation to borrow, I don't know. If there's, you know, if you've got authority left over that you don't use, there's nothing lost for that, it just evaporates and it's fine, so.
Yeah, so if you just want to have Nate can let me know a not to exceed number that you're comfortable with, then I'll get the papers drawn up, so that you're able to hold the hearing on the schedule that I just was given here. So we could set the hearing on the 12th? Well, no, not set.
I mean, I need the...
When, when would they, when would they act to set the hearing, though?
Um, we could do the 20, I haven't said it, the 24th would be the, it's, I think, on Monday.
Well, we'd want it before the 12th, so is there another...
No, 24th, I'm sorry, 24th would be the hearing.
Right, but, but to set the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, is there another board meeting before the 12th?
Um, the 12th is when I need it to go into the paper.
Right.
To get, be there on the 19th to hold it on the 24th. So they're talking about having another special later on, I have to have a special to set the hearing date for the 24th.
Okay, that's, I need that date.
Yes.
And, and then a not to exceed number, and I can take it from there and have paperwork for you.
Yeah, so I would add that to whatever meeting I'm able to set up for later on, for them to set that public hearing date, if that's where they're choosing to go, it's right now. We can set it for the 24th or whatever date I can work out, as long as I can meet my publication deadlines.
Is the console payment going to be part of that also?
It has to be, well, then...
Well, then you're at 10 right there.
You've got to add, you've got to add 20.
Yeah. You're setting that 10 just for that. Was the console already, is that, that's already been purchased, though? I think it's the maintenance, so at least...
No, we have a lease purchase of five consoles. And there's 0% interest for one year, which I think October is one that.
So we can refinance that?
So we, we need to refinance that into this issuance as well.
Okay, so, so here's what we ought to do. Work with Nate to get me a not to exceed number, he can talk to you about cost of issuance and so forth. Let me know that number, and when you're going to have your special meeting to set the hearing on this, and then I'll make sure you have the paper to follow through.
Would you agree that it's also wise to just have a reimbursement resolution for this project in case they do want to spend some cash?
I think what we'll do is put reimbursement language in the hearing resolution instead of a standalone.
Yep.
And that way it's...
As long as it's covered.
It's all covered, and it's easy to find.
Okay. That way the county has maximum flexibility to use cash and reimburse yourself later, or whatever you need to do, so.
Okay.
We have secondary roads referendum, was that especially part of this discussion too?
Well, we've had multiple conversations about doing a referendum. Tracy provided me with the deadline that you would need to have that public mission through the auditor would be September 20th. So those are your deadlines if you're wanting to do an 11-5 election. So leading up to that, I know that there's certain... five election, so leading up to that, I know that there's certain paperwork that Mark will have to draw up for if they're gonna go to a referendum on secondary road shop, I know that the language is, is rather detailed, and if you're going to put in other projects for secondary roads, that all has to be compiled into Mark, so I wanted to be sure that Mark was aware of their timeline and on moving on where this needs to go, and then of course we have the, we could issue it the next calendar year for those, those bonds, but I just want everyone to be aware that September is those dates that, you know, the months go by faster than you think, and particularly if you're gonna do some campaigning, we don't have to wait till the eleventh hour to put that referendum on, I don't believe there's a minimum maximum for it, it's just that, that you have to have it by then, right, and you could do it a month earlier than that and have that much more for campaigning for it or whatever, correct, is that correct, Mark?
Well, right, there's a, there's a maximum number of days that has to be filed with Tracy.
Right, and that's on September twentieth.
So, that would be the main concern as far as time goes, because if you, if you're beyond that, then she's not allowed to hold the election, but as, as long as you meet that, it could be sooner than that, I think that's your question.
Yes.
Also, I'll just throw in there, the campaigning part has to be done by private parties who are not.
Understood, I guess.
So, and the reason to say that now is it takes time for those private citizen groups to formulate what they wanna do, to say for or against or whatever their choice is, so, that's another consideration, they don't know how to cheer or boo if they don't know what the proposal is, so.
Right, so, David, did you want to talk about the referendum?
Yeah.
Any projects you have put in there?
Yeah.
Just to let you know, Aaron, David's passing out paperwork right now.
Aaron, I believe we can email you a map of this, computer by computer.
Okay.
So we were tasked to propose a bond option with, that included some projects in the four quadrants of the county, unpaid highways, and also the main shop site facility, we've had previous meetings to discuss the shop site facility alone with myself and Shive, this is kinda adding to that discussion to show some of those roadways that we could also pick up that are in fair to poor condition in the county, these are based on what they call pavement condition indexes, scalable zero to one hundred is what they use, so the map that's on the table gives a range of about twenty for each different color, red being the worst, green being the best, and then it kinda goes from there, and then, you know, white, green, yellow, orange, back down to red, so what these projects propose is to do a high-performance Opnek's asphalt lift on these stretches of roadways, these are the four ones that we've kinda targeted, which is all based on this map, and based on just visually looking at the roads, we assign them somewhat of a priority, although we feel that all are a priority, and so the total you see on the map labeled one, two, three, and four is around seven point seven five million, and that covers about twenty-six, almost twenty-six miles of county highway, and so what that would do on that map is change all those roads back to green, and we would hope to get potentially a twenty year design life out of it with proper maintenance and your routine maintenance that you do on asphalt pavements. It's a big number, but when you look at the bottom of the sheet, when you break it down, even with all the contingencies involved, you're looking at three hundred thousand dollars per mile, I have to throw out that it does not include drain tile, if we wanted to drain tile the roads on top of it to add some more insurance, you're looking at an additional eighty to a hundred thousand dollars per mile. Again, it's a large number, but when you think of economies of scale, if you were to do all four at once, you would get the best price out of it because you would be dealing with one contractor, one mobilization, maybe one asphalt plant, things of that nature, it's, and like Doug said, it's, when you're looking at this, it's kinda figuring costs versus public safety, because you're talking about emergencies, but they also need to drive the roads to get there, so if there's any questions on kind of the numbers we prepared for these roadways, I can take them now, and then if, any questions also regarding what a high-performance lift actually is, it's, I mean, it's about one and a half inches thick, very modified binder, binder, sorry, and it, it does have a high, what they call structural number, structural rating, so it can take the heavy loads, it's a little bit newer of a technology, so again, there is some risk, but it has been used on interstates, it has been used in other counties.
Hey, David, I.
Yeah.
Can I ask this there for a minute, can you tell me what the total number was that you're proposing?
So we split them up into four projects, if, just the, the total, and this includes contingency for end zones, seven point seven five million.
And can you tell me again what projects those are, I just don't have the benefit of having to email right up front of me.
Okay, I'll go through, so it's almost twenty-six miles, project number one is R-57, north of ninety-two, it would cover from Highway ninety-two to G-24, project number two is S-23, covering the covenant of Milo, project number three.
Which is really long, which is really long overdue in my program, I'm happy about that.
Yep, that's correct, and even the patching work we're doing on the road this year is only more benefit to a future overlay because part of the contingency in these numbers on these projects is to do full-depth concrete patching and get a better base out there before you even throw a one and a half inch lift on it, so even any patching work that's full depth on these roads is gonna benefit these for any future project, so that second project, Milo to Lakona on S-23, the third project, we're looking at G-16 Scotch Ridge Road from Highway sixty-five all the way into Carwell, and then the fourth project would sort of complete the route from Lakona to New Virginia, we're looking from highway, State Highway sixty-nine West to New Virginia on G-76, so the first.
And one of, one of the, I, I got all those, David, I appreciate that, one other question that I had was, do we have any dollars in there for, kind of like an additional countywide contract haul, or a bigger countywide contract haul, because one of the things I, I'm concerned about is that, you know, we've, you may or may not have been on the first two calls, but we're talking about justice center proceeds, tower communication proceeds, bonds, I just feel like if we hit the taxpayers with what they think is mostly shop site and some varying for growth, which they all need attention, I get it, I agree, and although, yes, Norwalk, but do we have some number in there for, you know, countywide contract haul of rock? Because I think that's, if you wanna get the rural voters to come out and vote for it, I think that's probably imperative, but I might be wrong, I don't know.
I think that's a need, but I'm not sure, and you can speak on this, how popular it would be for a vote potentially in the cities that they're now contributing towards rock roads that they hardly drive, at, at least in this case, we know whether you're rural, live in a city or not, you're probably taking these county highways.
Correct.
I just, I just don't prefer to put any sort of gravel or rock on a bond, but if that's the board's decision, then that's the.
Yeah, it's hit, it'll end up in the ditches to some extent, or, you know, in, in time it's, it won't be there, and so I guess that it's not permanent, I guess, I guess this is, I guess there's a messaging would have to be, hey, if we're doing these things, the county's now not gonna have to spend as much time patching or resources patching, that should free up some additional budget in your budget to address the secondary roads, or, or those folks aren't gonna vote for it.
I, I, Mark Corey here, Aaron, I think from a bond standpoint and a federal tax standpoint, the board can finance capital improvements that have a longer lifespan, like rebuilding the road beds, something that had a fifteen-year life or whatever they have, but to, you know, to bond finance rock, I think we could.
I won't pay twenty years for rock, it's not gonna be there in two.
Right, yeah, yeah, and there's a useful life problem from a federal tax standpoint too, so if we did that, we might have to do that taxable, and you just end up really behind the eight ball by financing rock.
Because in this case, I can try and stand behind it and say, I think I can get twenty years out of it, but on gravel road, it just takes one extreme weather cycle, and it's just too hard to find.
I get it, I get it, and I think our message from the county, I mean, to get the same path, it's gonna be what, sixty percent, yay, to get it done?
Yes.
Probably, I mean, then, then we have to give the rural residents of the county some sort of a carrot, and I hate to talk like that, but it's just the truth, to get, to get a yes vote at sixty percent, we have to let them know then that, hey, our engineer's budget, which is X, Y, Z number, has now had some of it alleviated by, by this bond to address some of these main, main roads, which lots of people drive, even the people in the rural district get on those roads eventually, but that should then free up some additional resources so that we can, we can, I'm not saying coat the roads of Warren County in gold or gravel, but we have to, have to show them something, or I fear that this is gonna be for now, we're gonna spend six years, seventy thousand dollars doing a bond referendum on this, and this is gonna come back at twenty-four percent or something stupid, and that's, that's a bad idea, so I, I, I think we all have to be on the same page, and if, we have to let those folks know that, that then we'll free up some funds, and there will be efficiencies from having a good shop site, that your employees can be, you know, working in a safe condition, and, and that'll help your budget to address additional rock, because that's, that's what I hear, I don't hear people, I know Crystal does, and I guess I hear some people talking about twenty-three, and I know it's terrible, I just don't get down there very much, so my, my voters in Norwalk, I don't hear a whole lot about, and it's twenty-three, even though I know it's for it, and needs to be fixed, but my point is, if we wanna get something done and get them to pass it, we gotta make sure that they're enticed enough to say, yeah, I'll pay five dollars a month more for this, or ten dollars a month more, or whatever the nominal figure is, otherwise, people are gonna be inclined to say, hey, didn't we just do a bond for the courthouse and a bond for this, these cell towers thing, and, oh my God, my taxes are going crazy, um, I don't, that's my, that's my honest assessment, I'm just being real with people.
Just a thought, has nothing to do with anything, but hopefully someday Congress will pass their two trillion dollar infrastructure bill that maybe will help us some, I'm not talking about any of this, it's something, I, I don't think we can get rock either, probably in that.
Well, we, I think we've already addressed a lot of the rock, because even, I, I know I've sent Megan some of those numbers, and obviously we've been getting some requests in for what are our numbers and where's the money go, and even with the gas tax increase, we boosted rock above and beyond that, so that's still funneling out of local dollars, so I think we're already doing that now, and I, my fear is that we're focused so much on the rock that we're not paying attention anymore to the bridges and the pavements, and so there's.
Yeah, and, and like I said before, there are, there are improvements done to gravel roads that are more permanent in nature, as far as the road bed, the crown, again, I'm no expert, but I, I know there are long-term improvements that can be made to gravel roads, and, and I'm not opposed or nor would the federal tax code penalize you for dealing with long-term capital improvement projects that involve gravel roads, I just am suggesting just not, just not the rock you throw on top, because that, that goes in the ditch, I live on one, and it's not, it's not a long-lasting thing, so.
Hey, I'm, I'm all, I'm a hundred percent on the same page and team, I just, I just have to be a little careful in getting behind something that, that might be wildly unpopular, I mean, it, it, it might be twenty-four percent or twenty-eight percent or something crazy, and so I just wanna make sure we're doing whatever, and I'm willing to listen, whatever has the greatest chance of passing, because S-23 needs work, Scotch Ridge Road needs work, I mean, those things need work and need a shot, and we can't pay for that out of David's budget, and we can't pay for that with transfers because it's prohibited from the code, and, and so this is our, sort of our shot, and I wanna make sure that we're as successful as possible, and I'm willing to do whatever we need to do to make it as successful as possible, I just, I wanna make sure that we're getting the job done, and so if that, if that's not a feasible thing, fine, but then we have to start messaging that, hey, this should free up some dollars to address other concerns, or the efficiencies from a shop site should equal X dollars per year of additional resources for the engineer's budget, which now can be used for things that people complain all the time about, is my take.
I, I think we need to get beyond the myth that they were built with a solid base to begin with, these roads, they dug the ditches out and put it on top, if you're looking at it landslide repairs, that's how you build a solid base, you're actually going out and finding select soils, you're testing the moisture content, you're sheepfoot rolling it in every one inch, it's a specific type of compaction, you might even test it with a nuclear gauge, I doubt they did that back then, and I think we need to get beyond that myth that there's some underlying base that used to be there, it's always been that way, it's just they were low-volume roads with different, uh, lower-weight equipment that used to run on these roads, it's, they were just far maxed.
You're correct, you're correct, David, I just want it to pass, I'm not arguing with you, I agree with you, I just want it to pass so that the shop site can be built, and those other things that are capable of needs can be done, like efficiently, and so I just want it to pass, however that happens, I don't care.
Uh, I'm gonna go out on a lit, Mark Corey again, there are, there are some road construction projects counties can do that, that are essential county purpose and, and don't require elections, they may or may not apply here, roads, bridges, and culverts that create jobs and wealth, that's an essential county purpose.
Come on, he's crossed those.
So, that's a somewhat high standard in the sense that it, it, it fits really easily when you have a new business coming in that says, if you'll build a road, we'll put in three hundred jobs, that's okay, that's a no-brainer, gets a little harder to make sure you're meeting that requirement when you have existing roads, I'm not saying it's impossible, but it gets a bit harder, there's also the ability to do, with, with some planning, there's the ability to do roads that are for economic growth or economic retention and stabilization that fall short of actually creating jobs and wealth, that standard's a little different, in that case, though, it's subject to a reverse referendum, so in other words, you'd put a notice out, not less than ten or more than twenty days, and then you would, if, if you got a petition, you'd have to go to an election, if you did not get a petition, you would not have to go to an election, so I just felt like I should give you the full menu of choices.
That's great, that's great to know, I'm learning all the time.
Yeah, yeah, so, so you know, you might have a road segment here where you can say, hey, we think that will create jobs and wealth, it's, it's an area that's growing, and if we had a good road, there'd be even more growth, and, and, and some companies might, you know, I, I guess my point is, you, you have to make sure it's factually true, but there are other routes to financing some roads.
And it's, I think the message is it's not even about just your, you know, residential traffic, there's millions of dollars of commodities that cross these roads every year, and that's, you know, your farm businesses out there still need it, I mean, that's their, some of these, these are all FM routes, that's their, you know, kinda the main farm-to-market way to get feed, grain, food, whatever in the market, so.
Well, I'll, I'll, and I'll additionally give you credit, David, remember with. Well, I'll, I'll, and I'll additionally give you credit, David. The number was left at eight and not ten or twelve. You know, that, that has appeal.
And on the positive, that's with still a good amount of contingency built in, so we're not, you know, we're still sitting at a solid number for any unknowns. So if it was to be done all at once, I mean, you could, maybe it comes in at six, seven million, you know, to cover all those miles. This is, I mean, we're still looking at a high number.
And then there's an additional six for the shop site.
Yeah, we're looking at around a total of six point five million for the shop, and that kind of varies on how we do the consult, consult shit building and some other cost-saving measures to maybe put up a cold storage building or heated storage building before it, the actual floor to have it back and things like that. But if you find top shops there, from two thousand seventeen to now two thousand nineteen, we're sitting at around six point five million as it's sat two or three years.
Does that include any of your own reserves to be used on that or not?
No, that, our own reserves would bring that number down. If you said one point five, it would bring it down to five million.
So the total number would be somewhere around eleven?
And we, I believe we budgeted two million and, as kind of a, to give us some cushion in our own budget, but I would prefer we stick to one point five million or lower coming out of our reserves. But if two million is what makes or breaks the project, then our department's willing to break even and try and build our reserves back up, because we recognize it as a need and not just a warrant.
Hey, Mark. Hey, Aaron. Just so you'll know, I think it's like seven point eight million and five million, so it's not eleven, it's whatever the math is.
Twelve, five.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Which, which then would, if you did that all at once, then you'd again be overpaying qualified, so then you start to wonder, should that also be lumped into one? Although you'd have to get moving on a lot of fronts to make all that come together, if that's.
Mark, why don't you explain to, you know, the secondary road building, you know, like we've dealt with some with the urban renewal area, and there are ways of doing everything you're talking. It's subject to reverse referendum or an election.
Us moving on any of these projects won't be an issue.
The, what Jeff was referencing is, and I kinda referred to it with my third option on non, or my second option on non-election for the roads. The building and the roads could be considered part of, with the right planning in the background, could be considered projects that either will help to promote or retain economic development for the county. And, you know, in a, in a rural area where farms and ag-related businesses are the main, not, not the main, but one of the biggest drivers of economics, that's not a stretch necessarily, so.
Well, that's good, now.
So, so what you might do is consider putting together a plan that, that makes that case, that makes those findings. And that would be subject to a hearing process and, and input from other affected taxing entities and so forth. And then if you adopted that plan, then you might be in a position where you would be set up to do a ten and twenty-day notice and see if you get a petition to go forward on the issuance of the bonds. I, I'm avoiding saying the reference to tax increment financing, because I don't think you're talking about using anyone's tax levy, the school's levy, or anyone else's levy in the classical TIF sense. It's just one of the other powers in the urban renewal chapter, and you would have a debt service levy countywide, not TIF. So the, the plan would be to spell out and to make the case for why these roads or this building are essential and important to stabilizing and retaining economic health of the county. And, but now, understand though, if you get a petition, then you've gone through that whole process and you're right back where you would have been if you just called an election in the first place. So I'm not saying that's the golden bullet to any problems that we have, but it, it is another alternative that you have.
What is, what is, if you get a petition, what, is it triad district court, or is it just, okay, you have a petition, so you have to go back to do a referendum?
Right, right, right. You, if you, the, the standard for the petition is ten percent of voted in the last regular county election, so it's not a huge number, or it's also not an insignificant number. And if you get a petition filed, then it's either drop it or hold the election.
Okay. Good to know, Mark. Thanks.
Yeah.
I think, well, we wouldn't have time to do the hearing before September. You'd have to have your-
They'd have to have the plan set up, and that'll take some time.
But it is, I mean, you, you, it is possible to get it done without a lot.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are counties, as Jeff mentioned, that, that have made these findings, have done the planning, and have put it out before the public and not gotten a petition and gone ahead and issued in a, in a little more expedient fashion. Because you get to the same place, the same, the same result of the debt service levy to pay.
And we're pretty confident in these numbers, because we actually broke it down by items that would be used on, you know, each item on that particular project. It's not just a general number. They're pretty detailed numbers for where we're at in the game. And again, I, and I, I'll bring up the economies of scale. We recommend doing all four at once, but they are ordered sort by priority, so although our department wouldn't recommend it, you could say, well, let's address number one and number two. But to get the most bang for your buck, again, you're still better off doing all of them at once, because now you're looking at the scale of zero to one hundred on the pavement condition indexes. You just switched all those roads to one hundred. And now when we're looking at long-term solutions for the county, we have a much better baseline to work off of.
Agreed.
So it's just weighing those different things as we move forward with this.
Any other questions for David? Or any of us?
No, but thank you for your time, Mark, and David, and for us, and whoever else is on the call.
Thank you, Aaron.
It was, it was, it was informative, and I, I now think there's more than one way to theoretically skin the cat, so that's good.
Good, but I don't know, I, as a chair of the board, would go down those avenues, so.
Sure.
Just letting you know. Okay? Thank you. Moving on to item three, employee reviews. Thank you. Thanks, Aaron.